I'd like to call our board meeting back to order. 4.0 additions, corrections, modifications to the agenda. I have none, is that correct? 5.0 citizen statements. We had one, but that person had to leave, so we appreciate them. 6.0 call for executive session, none. 7.0 if I could ask for a motion and a second to approve the agenda for November 2nd, 2011?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries six to nothing. Dudley's not here. Would like to ask for a motion and a second to adopt the resolutions Veterans Day, November 11th, American Education Week, November 13th through the 19th, America Recycles Day, November 15th, National Community Education Day, November 16th, and our final resolution, National Inclusive Schools Weeks, December 5th through the 9th. All in favor?
I'll move.
I'm sorry.
So moved.
All in favor?
And Mr. President, I do have a couple of, I think I've identified a couple of Scrivener's errors in those resolutions, so I'd suggest they be amended as follows.
Okay.
Resolution number two on American Education Week in the fourth, whereas it should read "schools are community lynchpins" instead of "schools and community lynchpins."
Thank you.
I believe. And then in resolution number five, which is National Inclusive Schools Week, in the title it cites the 11 years of celebrating inclusive schools, but then says it's the 10th Annual Inclusive School Week in a couple other places. Consulting with my sources, I believe this is the 11th Annual Inclusive Schools Week, so request that one be amended accordingly.
Alright, so noted, thank you. With those corrections and modifications made, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries six, zero. 9.0 communications. 9.01 calendar of meetings. The next meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for Wednesday, December 7th, 2011, at Central Middle School, starting at 7:30 PM. And 9.02 liaison reports. Let's start with Mr. Major down there, if you have any.
Go cards.
I think a lot of us were attending those. Okay, any other liaison reports? Go ahead, Tom.
I was lucky enough to catch the very end of the poetry reading today for the Mosaics program. It was, once again, it just, it amazes me saying that. And I also have to say that I did make it to the Parkway North homecoming football game. It was a bit of reunion, although didn't go so well thanks to the Colts, but congratulations to the Colts on their winning conference.
Okay, thank you very much. Helen, I don't know if you had something?
Yes, on October 11th, I volunteered to read for Debbie Van Ryn's Mosaics class for Parkway South Middle Reading Club, and I chose a five-minute mystery to read to the students. There were some great guesses as to whodunit, but those of you that are, might be here tonight or watching on streaming, no one was able to figure out the answer, so I will say that the balloons set off the metal, the motion detector. And if you're not watching, you're not going to get the answer. I wish to thank Kurt, who was one of the students in the class, for escorting me to the classroom, because I know I probably would not have found it without him. And on October 20th, Parkway Central High chose a beautiful day to hold their 23rd Annual Special Olympics Soccer Tournament, and each of the over 300 special school district athletes buddied with a Central student. And the parade of athletes was very, very exciting for all the students. And I truly enjoy attending this activity each year. I think this was my fourth or fifth, and I really enjoy watching all the students on this. And my thanks to Noi Hadass, if I mispronounce the names, I apologize, Abby Zhang and Becca Weisel, Weisel, for doing a great job as co-chairs for the event, to Julie Pepper for her excellent coordination skills, and that's coordinating the event, and to Principal Tim McCarthy, thank you. And also, just as a reminder, public service announcement. The Fall Craft Fairs, one is at North coming up on the 5th and 6th, the next one is here at Central from, on the 12th and 13th, and at South on the 19th and 20th.
Thank you very much.
Last week, Dr. Marty and I attended a meeting of cooperating school districts. We're in the process of doing some strategic planning, and we got to hear proposals from three different firms to do the strategic planning. It's going to be an interesting process. As you know, Dr. Centi is the new executive director there, and he would like to kind of reinvent the organization. He's got a lot of work to do, he wants a lot of feedback from people, so we've got a lot of work to do, I think.
I remember him saying, I asked him how it was going over there, he said, "It feels like a part-time job." Compared to what he was required to do here, maybe. Do you have anything?
Yeah, we started some new liaison groups at Dr. Marty's request, and this, since our last board meeting, a few of them have met. Chris and I attended, and then Dee later on, the budget liaison group with Mark Stockwell, which was great, thank you. And then last week Bruce and I met with Kathy Blackmore, and we talked about some curriculum areas, and we learned a whole lot.
Good. I appreciated too, meeting with Mark. We're not immune to some of the things happening out there, and we need to look at things. I was really thrilled too, to find out that many of you met and have come up with over 100 ideas. Some of those will obviously be discarded, but everything was on the table to put out there, to look at and think about, and I'm just excited, partly because, well, I guess you all know, our concern was that we're spending down our, we're spending more money than what we're taking in. We have a nice balance there, what they call a balance fund, but if we kept doing this in three or four years, there'd be nothing left, and then we'd be facing some pretty drastic and horrible types of decisions. This way, we're kind of the masters of our own fate, and we can look at this without panic and do the right thing, and make sure that as we do it, we are able to maintain Project Parkway. It's kind of one of the things we told Dr. Marty, we need to get back to where things balance, but we want to make sure that we do it so that Project Parkway can accomplish its goals, so that we can take care of kids. So I think that's going to be neat as we go through that, and I know there's a large committee meeting, and that's the yardstick they're using, what's the right thing to do for kids, as we try to rationalize this, and so it's going to be exciting as we go through it, and I think we'll be proud of ourselves when we're done. I did want to say too, I was at that Mosaics thing this morning, or this afternoon, right after lunch, and there's 18 kids in this class, the academy at the West Middle School, and they're all 11-year-olds, and pretty amazing, some of the stuff they can do. I'd like to just read to you, one 11-year-old's, this is what they call the ekfasstik, ekfasstik writing. It's a Greek style that they used essentially with the wars that were going on, they thought they were going to lose most of their art, statues and sculptures and things like that, so they went to a writing skill that allowed them to describe it in great detail, so that if you read about it, you could visualize what was there. This little 11-year-old, she wrote three poems. This one's called "Mother's Love." This just shows you, imagine an 11-year-old writing this. "The girl watches the mother and her daughter. The daughter laughs at the lukewarm water as the lukewarm water tickles her feet, pruned from time in the water. She is reminded of her own mother's love, the hours her mother would comb her golden locks of hair until each one was pinned straight. The girl reaches to touch her short knotted blond hair. Her heart ached from her mother's soft brown hair and red apron worn from years of gourmet cookies. Her mother's last words still ringing in her head, 'Never forget your mother's love, which will always stay with you until heaven's angels carry you out to meet me in the clouds.' She wondered why she could taste salt on her quivering pink lips." That's pretty amazing for an 11-year-old, and it wasn't an uncommon type of poem that was read with, seemed to be some great feeling, and the words they used were pretty amazing. So, another group of kids, that it's worthy to recognize. Anything else as far as liaison groups? Appreciate each of you taking assignments to meet with some of those groups and keep the board apprised of some of those things, because we can't all be experts, but we appreciate it. 10.0 action items. We would like to ask for a motion and a second to approve action items 10.01 through 10.14. Do we have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion, or any that should be pooled for further discussion or action? Nope? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries six, zero.
And I just say, I have to abstain from one check number that Mrs. Norgeman has taken note of.
Thank you. And 11.0, these are our action items tonight, 11.01. Approval of the 2010-2011 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. We've had our external auditors in here to look at things at Parkway, and so we're looking forward to their report tonight, and we'll turn that over to Mr. Stockwell.
Good evening. Each year Parkway engages an independent accounting firm to audit our accounting records and financial reports for the prior fiscal year. The firm of Kerberack &amp; Brockel performed that audit this year, and Mr. Brian Wertz is the partner responsible for our engagement, and he's here to present the results of that audit.
Good evening. As Mark said, I'm, I'll stand back. My name's Brian Wertz, I'm a partner with Kerberack &amp; Brockel, the external auditors for the district. What I passed out is just basically a summary of our audit, our audit results, and that sort of thing, and I'll just go over briefly and answer any questions that you might have at the end. Basically, as a part of our audit, we issued two reports, one being the CAFER, which is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and then we also issue a federal and state reporting package, which is opinions related to federal programs, federal financial assistance, and state compliance. In the CAFER, there's various sections in the CAFER. The first part is the introductory section, which is very important to note that there is the ASBO, the Association of School Business Officials Certificate of Excellence and Financial Reporting. As you know, the district annually submits the report to get this certificate of excellence, so it's reviewed by an external source to get the certificate, and every year, they will review it, award the certificate, and come back with comments of the things that we should consider changing and that sort of thing. I'm not sure how many years the district's been receiving this, ever since I've been on the engagement they have, so I think they should be commended for that. And not only that, but the comments that we get back are very minimal, minute comments about improvement, things to consider for improvement, so I just wanted to point that out. Then there's the financial section, and starting on page one is our Independent Auditors Report, which basically is our opinion on the financial statements. The next is the Management's Discussion and Analysis, which I think is very important. It starts on page three, and that information is unaudited by us, but it's prepared by management, and it describes the current year financial results and plans for the future for the district. So I think it's a very important, integral part of the financial statements that should be read and looked at. There are various financial statements in the CAFER, starting with the government-wide financial statements, which are prepared on the accrual basis of accounting, and that includes the statement of net assets on page 16, and the statement of activities on page 17. Then it goes into the fund financial statements, which is prepared on the modified accrual basis of accounting, and that's the balance sheet on page 18, and the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance on pages, on page 20. Then there's a reconciliation between those two sets of financial statements. There's a reconciliation of the balance sheet on the modified accrual basis to the statement of net assets on the full accrual basis of accounting, and the same thing on the income statement. And the difference basically is, in the modified accrual basis of accounting, expenditures for capital outlay and debt service and any proceeds received from bond issues, those are revenue or expenses in the fund financial statements, on the modified accrual basis of accounting. Then those are converted to full accrual, much like a business enterprise would have, and the capital assets are reported as assets versus an expenditure, and the debt is reported as a liability versus a revenue if it's issued, or expenditure on the principal and interest paid. Then we go into the notes to the financial statements, which are on page 25, and then the budget to actual starts on page 51, and then there's statistical information that's required to get this CAFER and the certificate of excellence reporting, which all starts on page 59. Our audit is our responsibility, the financial statements are management's responsibility. It's their responsibility to prepare the financial statements in accordance with GAAP, and it's our responsibility to audit those financial statements. We cannot be a part of the district's internal control structure, so therefore, you can't give us a set of financial statements and expect us to get them into a GAAP reporting model. That's the management's, the district's management's responsibility to do that. We are required to plan and perform our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, governmental auditing standards, and circular OMB A133. There are basically three types of opinions that we can issue, and an adverse opinion, which is basically the financial statements are not in accordance with GAAP, a qualified opinion, which means there's an exception to the financial statements that would not allow us to issue an unqualified opinion, and then there's the unqualified opinion, which is also known as a clean opinion. The third paragraph of our opinion, which we're issuing an unqualified opinion, states that, "In our opinion, the financial statements are fairly, are presented fairly in the financial position of the district in accordance with GAAP." So we're basically saying that, "In our opinion, based on our audit procedures, these financial statements are in accordance with GAAP." As a part of our audit, we are required to review internal controls of the district, but not enough, more to plan and perform the audit than to give an opinion on the internal controls of the district, but we are required to determine and report to you if there's any weaknesses in the internal control system that we would report to you. And basically, as a part of our audit, we identify, we get commentaries related to the cash receipts cycle, the cash disbursement cycle, the payroll cycle, and the financial reporting of the district, which is the monthly close and the year-end close. And then what we do is, we determine what the key controls of those cycles are, and we test those key controls to make sure they're working as the district says they are working. If we were to find a control deficiency or a material weakness in those controls, we would be required to report that to you. A control deficiency is that there's a control within the district system that does not prevent or detect a misstatement in the financial statements on a timely basis. A material weakness is a deficiency in controls that there is a reasonable possibility that there would be a material misstatement in the financial statements and it would go undetected. So those are sort of the levels that we would have to report, and I'm happy to report we didn't have any of those to report to you this year. And that's, we are required to do that under the financial reporting of the district, which is the financial statements themselves, and we're also required to do that under the federal programs of the district. And again, happy to report, even with the tests that we did related to federal programs, there were no control deficiencies or material weaknesses to be reported to you. In auditing the federal programs, we're basically required to audit 25% of the federal expenditures made by the district under certain programs. We're required to audit every program once every three years and make sure that we have at least a 25% coverage. This year, the programs that we audited were the child nutrition cluster, the basic formula, ARA cluster, the job spill cluster, which is ARA as well, and the adult basic education. As a result of our audit, we issued an opinion on the compliance with these programs, did the district comply with the requirements of these programs, which we gave an unqualified opinion on that, so we're basically saying that they did comply with the requirements of these programs. And again, we had no material weaknesses identified, or significant deficiencies identified related to those programs. We're also required to disclose to you if there were any findings related to circular A133, which there were not. We didn't have any findings related to that as well. The last part of our reporting requirements are related to state compliance, and that's related to budget, budgetary and disbursement procedures, accurate disclosure of attendance, and accurate disclosure of transportation. We perform this, this part of our audit in accordance with attestation standards established by the AICPA. There again, we issued an unqualified opinion on those procedures of the district, which basically means that they're being performed adequately. The other required communications, as I stated earlier, there are certain things that we're required to disclose to you. The significant policies, or accounting policies that the district uses to prepare these financial statements are described in note one to the financial statements. Again, it's the district's responsibility to select the appropriate accounting policies, and it's our responsibility to audit those policies. Other than one policy, the district's policies from prior year were consistent, which they always should be, your financial statements should be prepared consistently from year to year. There was a new GASBIE that came out last year, we talked about, that was going to affect the financial statements this year, and that was GASBIE 54, and that's just basically how fund balances are to be reported, which is just a little bit different, but there are five categories now of fund balance, and they're non-spendable, which would be like inventory, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. So we had a little bit of a reclassification on how our fund balances are reported this year. There were no transactions that lacked authoritative guidance or consensus. We encountered no difficulties in performing our audit. We had no disagreements with management. All these things are great to report. There were no audit adjustments to the accounting records of the district, which means we basically didn't have any audit adjustments. There were no misstatements on the financial statements they prepared and gave us to audit. As a part of our audit, we are required to get representations letters from management that basically says they've cooperated with all of our inquiries, answered their questions to the best of our ability, didn't withhold information, so that's a part of our engagement, we get that letter. And that letter dated September 30th, which is the same date of our audit opinion. That is the date that we take responsibility for these financial statements. Any subsequent events that would happen between June 30th and September 30th, which is the day the financial statements are released, we have to evaluate any subsequent events and determine if they need to be disclosed in the financial statements, or if there may be an adjustment that would have to be made to the financial statements through that date. And then the last thing is, we didn't have any consultations with any other independent accountants as a part of our engagement. That's a summary of our audit. I'd like to thank Mark and Maureen and the accounting staff for doing a great job, as they always do. We got in and out relatively quickly. We think it's pretty painless, they may say different, but we have a job to do, they cooperate tremendously with us, and we really appreciate their efforts.
Thank you, Brian. We appreciate your firm and this kind of work that you perform for our district. I think in the beginning, when we met, we made it clear that we wanted you to be able to feel that you were completely independent, and that there would be, there would be cooperation, we knew there would be, but that you could always come to the superintendent of the board if there was any, anything that you needed to straighten out, but that is obviously not necessary. We want to compliment Mark and Maureen and their departments for this kind of work that seems to come forth regularly every year, and we appreciate it very much. Are there any questions that the board members might have for Brian or Mark?
Just for Brian, and this is, I've read to the best of my ability, I'm not a numbers guy, but I guess my, one question I would have is, and you touched pretty heavily on the federal programs and the requisite audits and controls there. What percentage of the work that your firm did on the audit is attributable to the federal programs? Just ballpark percentage is fine.
I would say that it's probably around 25%, depending on the number of programs that you have to look at.
Okay.
Not needing to bore you with a lot of details, but you know, basically, because all these programs are done under one internal control structure, it used to be, we could look at 40 expenditures, and so if we had four programs, we would look at 40 expenditures, 10 out of each program, and it was 40, whether we looked at four programs or 10 programs. Now, the standards have changed, and it says you have to make a sample on each program. So if we have four programs, we're going to do more work than we used to have to do under four programs under the old standards. So it's added a little bit of work to us, but I would say it's probably about 25%.
Okay, and that's for federal dollars, or roughly 6 million out of our total budget of, so, I was just trying to get a feel for the overhead.
Yeah, and there's a lot of planning that goes in with these federal programs, and it's just, it's almost like a whole separate little sub-audit, because you got to plan, you have a planning for the audit, and then you have planning for federal compliance. You have these additional programs that you have to complete related to federal programs, so.
Okay, and I also noticed there was a section on Missouri compliance. How much of the total audit would you attribute to that?
Minimal, I would say maybe, you know, eight to 16 hours, and most of that is related to attendance.
Okay, and so for percentage of the total efforts?
Probably about 3% or 4%, something like that.
Okay. Alright, I just wanted to, trying to get a feel for the overhead here.
Sure.
Appreciate it. Great, great work, by the way. Thanks.
Thanks.
Any other questions from the board? Mark?
I did want to just acknowledge Maureen Dennis a little further tonight. She's been putting this together for, what, 25, 26 years. She actually put the first Comprehensive Annual Financial Report together, and she does such a great job managing the finance department, and this year was an especially difficult year for them, because they also implemented new accounting software. So it was a tough time, but as you heard from Brian, we had a very clean audit, and it's Maureen and her staff that did that, so.
Well, thank you. And Brian, I just would like to say, in my unqualified opinion, that's a great tie.
Thank you.
Let me ask for a motion and a second, then, that the Board of Education approved the 2010-11 audit report as presented in the November 2nd, 2011 Board Materials.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries six, zero. Thank you very much again.
Aye.
Okay, over to 11.02, Approval of Attendance Area Recommendations. We have been working very much on this in great detail over the last six months, certainly back a couple of years ago, as Project Parkway started. This was certainly one of those areas, and maybe a few distractions along the way, but a lot of work and a lot of good meetings, and I look forward to the final report tonight that we're going to be considering. So our Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education, Desi Kershoffer, if you would make your presentation.
Very good, good. It's a pleasure to be here again tonight, and you're right, Chris, it's been, it's been a long journey. You know, you think back, we knew with our projections that we were facing issues, we knew with the class sizes that we wanted to maintain, we were facing issues with our enrollment increases, and really took a hard look at it, starting in 2009 with the onset of Project Parkway. So I think you've heard plenty of attendance and boundary updates over the last couple of years, culminating with the recommendation tonight, so a lot of work moving forward. So, let's see if we can get this rolling up there. And, you know, this, coming forth tonight with this recommendation was certainly not without its challenges, but it was something that needed to be done for our students and for our current students and future students. So I am excited about bringing a proposal tonight, after a lot of, a lot of hard work, a lot of thinking, a lot of process went into the last couple of years to get to tonight, and so I'm very proud of the work that's been put in behind it, and the committees and the Project Parkway groups that have led to this recommendation. Just to review, I do want to kind of go through a little bit about what the proposal was. I know you had seen it at the last board meeting, it's been presented in a memo, and I know you have attended various of our community meetings, so I know you've seen several renditions of the current proposal, but I want to remind you that here's where our current boundaries are, looking at the proposed changes, and what that does to that border area, and just to highlight those areas again. That's the area that's currently McKelvey, that would be moved to Riverbend. It's the area that is currently Ross, that would move to Riverbend. And then within the north attendance area, that's the attendance area of Craig Elementary, that would move to that would move to Ross Elementary. So again, those are the proposed changes that have been before you at a previous meeting, and that we bring for you to review again and vote on this evening. Essentially, what you saw on the last slide were these residential areas. Ross to Riverbend was old farm estates and the adjacent homes northwest of Amiant and Woodland Point Complex. From McKelvey Elementary to Riverbend Elementary was Pheasant Run Complex, and then Royal Pines Condos. And then the switch from Craig to Ross was Driftwood Place Pavilion and West Point Complexes, the areas west of Bennington. So this is the slide that was presented that the Connections Task Force worked with on this final proposal. I think the important thing to bring up to you is, as we work through this, is to look at, and I'm going to go this way, since you're all looking this way, and I'll point a different way, was that the numbers in the proposal get within the desired enrollment range. And that was kind of our major objective from the start, is as we worked through this, worked through different scenarios, and you remember your lesson on neighborhood planning units, as we adjust it and add it, subtract it, move back and forth planning units, our major objective here was to get to a proposal this evening that would be within the school's desirable range. So since our last meeting, and you reviewing that proposal, we have had four public meetings. One at, the last one at Riverbend Elementary, but we also held, starting at Craig, and in between, we were at McKelvey and Ross. So we did receive some feedback, some very valuable feedback at those meetings, some good transition ideas. Just a reminder that the meetings were attended by the members of the Superintendent's Council, members of the school board were there, and also our principals of the schools that would be impacted by the change. So we had from all four of those elementaries, and also from Northeast Middle, Central Middle, and representation from both North High and Central High on those. During the meetings, we see several ideas on transition. We did get some general concerns, comments, and questions, things that really had been discussed, and through our committees, been addressed in different ways, or part of the dialogue and part of the process. But I think the two things that really stood out to us, that were a major concern, I would say, was that we need to clarify that the current middle and high school students would be able to finish their academic careers at Northeast and North High. And this final proposal on the board memo does present that as an option, that the students would fill out a special assignment request form, the one that was specifically made to meet the needs and address this concern, that would guarantee that the students would be able to stay and finish their academic careers at the secondary schools. The other major concern was to provide transportation to secondary students who elected to stay at Northeast. So if they did elect for that special assignment, there was a strong, well, we were asked to strongly consider whether or not we could provide transportation, and we've worked with Transportation Department to try to work out some of those concerns. So we were indeed, as part of the proposal this evening, we were indeed able to look at at least the next three years to guarantee transportation to those students who elected, and families who elected to stay at their current secondary schools. So as we would roll out, changing those boundaries or making those adjustments, this is kind of an outline of what it would look like as far as elementary implementation. If we look at grades K through 4th grade, those students would attend the schools according to the newly assigned attendance areas. In 5th grade, the students would attend the schools according to the assigned attendance areas as well, but they would have an option to receive a special assignment if they so choose. And it would be under our traditional special assignment form, where they would, they would be providing transportation, commit to providing transportation. As far as volunteer student transfers, we would have no new enrollments in the following schools, in the four elementaries that were impacted by this change. That would include Craig, McKelvey, Ross, and Riverbend. If students are currently under a special assignment at those schools, those would be honored, and then any other request would be just like any other special assignment, a case-by-case review. As far as the implementation on the secondary level, 6th grade, we would ask that they would attend the schools according to the assigned attendance areas. So rising 5th graders going into 6th grade would go to their, whatever new middle school they were assigned to, according to the attendance areas. And again, just to reiterate, 7th through 12th grade, would, we would ask them to attend schools according to the assigned attendance areas, but they would have the option to receive the special assignment for the duration of their academic career. And again, to point out, after listening to our feedback and responding to the citizen community concerns, that we would also provide transportation for at least three years to those students. So with that, I want to present the timeline, obviously this evening. You've seen the progressive timeline over the last couple of years of how we move forward, and we are at November, where we would like to propose a vote on the adjustments this evening. Also, we would like to start immediately with communicating with the families that would be impacted, although there's been a communication along the way. We want to make it personal to each family that would be impacted by the adjustments. Through December, communication would occur between the families and any of the new schools that they might have attended, along with the opportunity for transitions throughout the winter and spring month, and full implementation of the new changes in August of 2012. So kind of to sum things up, you kind of have been along for the ride, so to speak. I think this board has been through the duration, and so, but the proposal we bring to you tonight, we really think best supports our district mission and goals, and is the right thing for kids. It best accomplishes our desired outcomes. In other words, we were presented with a challenge to fix the overcrowding, and that's what we believe this proposal does, and then goes along with our Board of Education guidelines. So it places the schools close to within a desirable enrollment range. It balances the enrollment with the schools of comparable size, sustainable, and it supports the neighborhood school concept. So those are all things that the board thought was important and had in their guidelines, and it was all things that we also, as we received the community feedback through the survey, that rose to the top that we wanted to consider as we presented this final proposal. So with that, I'd like to entertain any final thoughts or questions? I know it's been a long journey, so we're open to hear any questions or thoughts the board may have at this point.
Okay. Thank you, Desi. Are there any board members who would like to ask Desi any questions? Mr. Major?
I guess one term that came up routinely was the equities issue, and I think we had several discussions regarding transient populations and those sorts of issues. Able to address any of that in this, in this final fix?
In the final, the final proposal that comes to you tonight was pretty much based on numbers and geographic location of most of the schools. So it's, I know some of the concerns with, and I'm trying to think if you meant, I guess I would need a clarification, equity between the schools?
I think there was some concerns raised at various points regarding the number of highly transient residences in a given school's enrollment area relative to another school.
Without knowing the exact location of the transient populations, or what are you referring to, I can tell you that it took, and it worked out this way. There was no intentional look at that. There was a lot of intentional dialogue around the topic, and it was brought up at several meetings. But the proposal you see tonight, which does move large residential areas, and it does work with apartment complexes and condominiums as well, so it's a mix of different types of residential areas. So without specifically addressing it in terms of, you know, looking at the movement among those areas specifically, but I do think that it does show a balance of which residential areas are impacted by it.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I would just like to compliment you on following this through, and it was a difficult topic to approach. I really feel your task force last year did a very thorough job studying this issue, considering all points, listening to people. When we hired Dr. Marty, we told him this year we were going to attack this issue and make a decision, and he still came.
And he still came?
And both of you, you handled this so well, and the principals were so helpful with this process. As you can see, I think the community understands why we need to do it. They're not, you know...
See, that's a great point. Just to point out, the community was incredible during this process.
They really were.
They really were. And so I can't thank the community that was involved enough, and appreciate when they brought considerations forward or concerns forward, they were brought forth in a thoughtful manner, and they really helped us through the process, so it was very valuable.
And we all know change is hard, but if we had unlimited dollars, we wouldn't have to do this, but that's not the case. So, thank you.
I have just one comment. As you go through this, you guys have come up with a wonderful process now and some software that really helps a lot, too. Is there, or was there any thought given to how often we ought to do this? Maybe it coincides with our, renewing our CSIP or something, so that it gets looked at before it becomes a big issue?
Yeah. I think, Chris, to answer that question, I think through the Project Parkway strategic plan, it should be an ongoing process through Goal Number 6, about efficient use of resources and looking at allocation just throughout. So as far as putting a timeline on it, we certainly don't want, it's been a long time since the school district decided to make some moves and adjustments, and we were really pressed to a point where it had to happen. And so we'd like to be able to be a little bit more proactive in the future, especially since we do, we do have those planning units already broken down, and we can take a look at it and study it more closely. And just, I know conversations between transportation and Nathan, who makes, Nathan Tyson, Dr. Tyson, who makes the projections, we've already talked about the possibility of maybe breaking our projections down based on those planning units instead of an entire area as well. So we're hoping to get even more specific and tighter with who's going to be where. Because as you know, as we went through the process, I explained that the numbers were still fluid, you know, we were working on estimated ranges, and so we hope to tighten it up. But I certainly think every five years with our strategic plan, with our CSIP, would be adequate, but I think there needs to be ongoing monitoring throughout the process.
Okay. Thank you.
I might just add that I, I think, I'd like to propose that we do look, not tonight, but we do look at it every five or six years. I think one of the things that we ought to make clear tonight is that, and I think was pretty clear at the school meetings, that we will allow the current population of elementary students in these schools to finish their careers. So we're not going to impact, we're not going to do it again for the five or six years that the children in these schools, in the north section, north and central, you know, we have to look at other areas. But I agree with the idea that, I think districts with the change in society and mobility really should force a discipline onto themselves to look at boundaries on a, on a five or six-year cycle, so we don't get in this situation. I don't know, I don't know if any of us can answer, and the last time Parkway redistricted, but I...
Dr. Sortino, if he was here, he was in charge of that in the early 80s.
Twenty-five, yeah. It's been almost 30 years, probably. That's probably a long, maybe too long a time, in districts that are, you know, this large and have, you know, potentially changing areas that have growth or even decline, so. I, too, would just like to say, be your comment, I've been through this process in other districts. This was the very, very best, and I give a lot of credit to not, I mean, this was done before I arrived on the scene, all the work of the group, and I would say, just observing Desi's leadership and many others, the Connection Committee, this was done well, and the community meetings were very good, and very helpful for us as we, you know, put the final recommendations on the table. So I want to just compliment Desi and many, many other people for their work.
Yeah, it wasn't dictatorial. It was really a consensus, and I think it really worked out well, when you worked at a good compromise with those people that felt a great, that felt like they were Vikings and really wanted to have the opportunity to consider that for their future.
It was really cool to hear their pride and their community, actually.
Absolutely.
Beth, do you have any comment or question?
Yeah, I kind of remember when my 11th grader was in first grade, I think is the last time that the board seriously looked at changing some boundaries.
Right.
And I remember there was a big citizens committee that worked, I think maybe there were citizens from each school that worked on the committee, because I remember the particular citizen that worked, that represented my school, and I remember how many hours she spent involved in those meetings, and I remember how disappointed she was that the board was not able to follow the recommendation of the committee. So I want to compliment you again on just the whole way this was handled, and I think if you turn around and look at all the empty chairs behind you, that's a testament to your success, because 10 years ago, I think it was a packed, it was a packed house in here, and I think the board members were commenting tonight as we walked in, that I don't think one of us received one phone call, or one email, or one letter from anyone since the conclusion of your four community meetings about, you know, their concerns. And as you told us, that you had a meeting scheduled with people, and then they canceled it because they felt you had addressed all their concerns. So I want you to put this in your pocket, and the next time there's a difficult issue that the board faces, I want you to refresh your memory about the steps that the Connections Committee took to get to this point, because I think it's a really good model for approaching really difficult decisions, so.
Well, I really appreciate that. And then there's plenty of people in this room that, through our Communication Department, to the school level, and the principals' communication, to the entire Superintendent's Council, and our Project Parkway leaders that stepped in and really helped formulate and solidify a process, so thank you.
One more quick thing. I see Mr. Tanny back there. No matter how many times you and your group have communicated that it's just impacting these students, this group of students from north moving to central, you know, just a very small pocket of our whole population, people in south and west and other areas of central are still thinking that it's going to impact them. So as many times as possible, could you just please get that word out, you know, in electronic news, on Facebook, in school newsletters, and whatever means it takes to have people understand that we're done for a long time.
I don't think we can say that. I wouldn't say that.
It's not 30 years.
We're done for this year.
For this evening.
Any other comments or questions? Helen?
I also want to piggyback on what everybody else has said regarding your presentations and the work that you and your staff did for this. It was fabulous. I would like to know, information has been disseminated, obviously, through Parkway Schools.net, and I was just looking on the computer here, the Parkway School District request for special assignment, can that be downloaded from the website, or does that have to be requested separately?
It is, well, there's going to be a couple of things that happen. We're going to send them to the families who would need them, so we're actually going to mail those, too, but yes, it can be downloaded as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think we should just make clear that next week, all the families impacted will be receiving a letter from the district, because there may be some people, believe it or not, that haven't been following us that closely, so we want to make sure. And then the transition activities will start in probably December from our principals, and we hope that as we get into second semester, the new families will get a real welcoming into those new schools, so that they get a, you know, as school planning starts for next year, they become a real part of, and we've been fortunately have heard from PTOs that are really planning. I want to compliment the Riverbend PTO in particular for really already thinking how they're going to really welcome these new families. I think that's wonderful, because there's going to be a lot of new families at Riverbend, so we really, hopefully really have a wonderful transition period, so people, when school starts next fall, it'll be pretty natural, if you like, they've been part of it.
And Helen, also with the special assignment forms that we sent out, part of the need, we asked for turnaround time fairly quickly on those, for December 1st turnaround time, so we can start planning our transportation plans with that. So part of that is asking them to, if they're going to need transportation, or if they're going to provide their own, so.
Helen, I just did a few clicks, and it's right there, easily accessible to anybody, the special assignment forms.
Okay. If there are no further questions or comments?
I'd like to make a motion.
I've asked Beth to make the motion tonight?
That the Board of Education approves the recommended boundary changes to the north and central attendance areas and support the implementation procedures as outlined in the proposal, which includes grandfathering current Northeast Middle and North High students for the duration of their academic careers and providing transportation to those students for a minimum of three years, beginning with the 2012, 2013 school year. Second.
So move. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0. Thank you very much. 12.0, rep... Twelve dot zero reports, twelve dot oh-one, revision of the academic distinction recognition for Parkway graduates. Again, I'm calling on Desi Kershawfer, our Secondary Assistant Superintendent, Charlotte E.J., Director of Pupil Personnel and Diversity, Gary Mazzola, Principal of South High School, and Jennifer Spethansky, Counselor at West High. If those people are here, we would appreciate you coming to the podium and making your presentation. I think Jennifer is the only one that's not...
She's taking that place.
There's... Most of the counselors are named Jen over there.
All right. West High has a reputation for having nicknames for all their counselors, don't they? Spot is... Yeah.
Hi.
On the full-day kindergarten, we'll get the other ready to go.
You better work, Lisa.
So, we appreciate that. Dr. Maxey is our Elementary Assistant Superintendent, Lisa Meredith, Coordinator of Elementary Communication Arts, Liz Morrison does everything, Mike Shimerold, the principal at Mason Ridge, always has cool toys, and Jennifer Martin, Principal from Sorento Springs Elementary.
Do you want to click, or do you want to click? Go ahead and click. Do you know when to click? I will take your... Okay. Good evening, President Jacob, Vice President Feldman, Board Directors, and Dr. Marty. Well, 2011 has been a record-setting year for the Cardinals, and it is also a record-setting year for Parkway with the implementation of Project Parkway's strategic plan. The administrators facilitating the kindergarten action team and the teacher leadership team are delighted to have this opportunity to present an update on the implementation of full-day kindergarten. Over the past three and a half years, we have traveled an extraordinary journey studying, researching, and learning with the involvement of many teachers, administrators, and parents. Their efforts have brought us to this exciting time when all of Parkway's kindergarteners, the class of 2024, are experiencing the benefits of a newly designed, high-quality, full-day The mission, the Parkway mission, has provided the foundation and guidance for the work accomplished thus far in implementing our full-day kindergarten program. We are ensuring that all students are capable, curious, and confident learners who understand and respond to the challenges of an ever-changing world, an inspiring promise we hold for all of our students. In the strategic plan, Goal One, measurable goal, or measurable objective one, Strategy Four reads, improve the kindergarten curriculum when full-day kindergarten is implemented. This evening, we are eager to provide an update regarding the strides we have taken to ensure mission is accomplished. So, at this time, Jennifer Martin, Principal at Sorento Springs, will overview the implementation plan.
Good evening. Last year, you approved this kindergarten implementation plan as part of our plan for full-day kindergarten in the Parkway School District. As you will recall, we established this following goal: To ensure all students have an equal opportunity to achieve Parkway curriculum and goals in all areas, including academic, physical, and social-emotional development through the implementation of full-day kindergarten for all students. At the start of the year, our statistics and our enrollment looked as such, but our program has continued to grow. Currently, to date, we have 1,135 kindergarten students enrolled in our program with only seven partial students who are enrolled. These eager learners fill seventy classrooms across the Parkway School District. Going back to our implementation plan that was presented last year, we vowed to create a kindergarten framework, excuse me, framework that would be developed, including the following areas: Beliefs about kindergarten learners, curriculum and assessments, instructional practices and strategies, intervention, learning space and time, and implementation support. Now, throughout our presentation this evening, you're going to hear about how this work has unfolded thus far this school year. However, at this time, I would like to take the opportunity to introduce to you some of our very own kindergarten teacher leaders who have spent many hours of time beyond their classroom and also their summer to help develop curriculum, assessments, and planning for the leadership of our kindergarten institute. Ladies, at this time, when I call your name, please stand to be recognized. Anna Bosler from Claymont Elementary. Katherine Petcher from Sorento Springs Elementary. Debbie Shademan from Riverbend. Kate Sinnacrack from Barrett's Elementary. Lauren Nichols from McKelvey. Mary Carol Shilly from Craig. Sarah Lorr from Ross. And finally, we'd like to recognize Megan Barnes, who could not be here this evening, from Carmen Trails. And without any further ado, I'd like to introduce to you our next presenter, and although her title is the Coordinator of Elementary Communication Arts, she wears many hats in our district. She comes to us with vast experience of the early childhood setting, and her contributions towards our kindergarten development of full-day program, our kindergarten framework, and the development for... The professional development for our teachers has been tremendous. I'd like to introduce to you Dr. Lisa Meredith.
One of the major undertakings of our teacher, kindergarten teacher leadership group was the development of a kindergarten website. We would like to take you there to preview some of the work that they have done that Jennifer referred to. And where's my cursor? There you are. The kindergarten website is linked to the online curriculum guide, and that was a very intentional decision, because we wanted the kindergarten teachers to have one place to go get all of their resources. The information that's on the kindergarten website is designed to support the work of the implementation of the guaranteed curriculum, not in addition to and not to compete with it. So, when you go to the kindergarten website, you will see that the Parkway mission is there, as well as the established goals and the beliefs that were included in the plan for full-day kindergarten. In addition, if you scroll down, you will see a lot of different boxes that have links in there. We're going to start with this box here, which contains documents that the kindergarten teachers worked on developing to show what mission and vision and learning principles would look like in action in a kindergarten classroom. So, if we peek at this document, just for a couple of examples, one of our vision statements says that we want our students to be able to transfer their prior learning to do demands in and out of school. So, we thought, what does that look like if a kindergartner can do that? How will we know? So, some examples we came up with. If our kindergartners can help family members write grocery lists or write letters to loved ones. If our kindergarten students bring their own interest into the classroom. If they're passionate about dinosaurs, and they bring dinosaurs to support their reading and getting of nonfiction books, to taking them to the block area and measuring cages that they can build for them. Or students who, during outside time, are finding critters that are crawling around and noticing and observing them as an extension from their science. So, you can see that each of the vision statements have examples. In addition, in this section of the webpage, are examples of learning principles and how the learning principles would be honored in a kindergarten classroom within Parkway. So, when teachers have questions or are wondering, what does that look like? This serves as a resource for them. In addition, on the website, you see that there's links where teachers can go to find resources to support their work with building community and supporting social development, for learning centers, how to use music and movement throughout the day, links that they can use to give ideas for families of how to support learning at home. So, the website is ever-living. The teacher leadership team is looking at examples of other work that teachers are sending in, and we are adding things to it on a regular basis. We will look at some other items from this in a little bit. One of the items in our plan indicated that we would really look at the learning space and the use of time within full-day kindergarten. So, this is what our classrooms used to look like. The tables in the center, all the children gathered together, resources put up often. And as we began to consider how the physical environment and the use of time impacted curiosity, autonomy, and opportunities for transfer, we realized it was time for some classroom makeovers. As a result, our kindergarten classrooms went from this to this. You will notice that there is space for whole-group instruction. There is space for children to work individually. There's space for children to work in small groups or with partners, as well as to explore and test out their ideas. You'll notice that the tables are not in the center of the room. They're put into work areas in the room to utilize the space. Materials are the responsibility for children to take care of and not the adults, which helps build autonomy. We also said that we would look at the use of time within the kindergarten day. The kindergarten framework provides guidelines for teachers. In developing those, we did our utmost to honor the unique developmental needs of five- and six-year-old learners. As a result, you will notice the instructional minutes reflect changes throughout the year. Specifically, notice the changes in relax and refuel and learning centers. They decrease in time throughout the year as we increase the amount of time for writing and math. Our mission clearly calls for students to be able to transfer their learning to new and unique... Our mission clearly calls for students to be able to transfer their learning to new and unique situations. All of the work that we just discussed, examples of learning principles, the learning environment, use of time, social development, were all intentionally designed to ensure students have adequate time to acquire, make meaning, and transfer their new learning to areas of personal interest, often referred to as transfer. Following are some examples of students transferring their learning from the core content areas to learning centers, and we are excited that the teachers are here to share the stories themselves. At this time, I'd like Anna to come up and tell the story behind this photograph.
Okay, good evening. Just a little bit of background of what you see in this picture, several of the kindergarten teachers worked this summer to rewrite some of the math curriculum, including some of our wonderful kindergarten teachers here tonight, and one of the main emphasis, emphasis is on the number sense, the concept of five and ten and making number combinations. So, during our learning center time, several of my students had built this long train of connecting cubes that went across the whole classroom and were counting very carefully by ones. We lost track around about a hundred, so one of them suggested, as I posed the question, is there another way that we could count these cubes that might be a faster way to do it or more, we talk about efficient math, and one of the girls suggested that we count by tens. So, they counted ten, stuck a sticker on the cube, counted ten more, stuck a sticker, until we got to the end, and we were then able to count by tens to three hundred and sixty-something. So, it was just a very real application of why we group numbers by ten and how it's more efficient to count, so we've used that concept now as an example throughout various activities in our classroom.
Hi, I'm Catherine Patcher, kindergarten teacher at Sorento Springs, and I'm going to tell you a little bit about the story behind this picture. This learning opportunity all stemmed from a reading unit that we do early on in the year called Learning From Your Name, Learning From Our Names, and in that unit, the kids are learning about letters and concepts about print and comparing their names with one another, and each day, at the beginning of the year, during this unit, the kids are given an opportunity to be star name, which is a really big deal. So, you get to pick us, we picked a stick together, and each kid had an opportunity to be the star name. So, when you're star name, you, we write our name up on the chart, and we sing songs and make big books, and you get to take home the All About Me.